Good evening. I call the meeting of the, this meeting of the Marysville City Council to order. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Velzah.
Here.
Councilmember Gilchrist.
Here.
Councilmember Hudson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bette Cavoli.
Here.
Mayor Branscombe.
Here. If you'd all be kind enough to stand and join in the pledge.
... The United States of America. And to the Republic, the word is just stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Not for tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, anything to report on closed session?
There's nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. We now, we have a proclamation for tonight's meeting, and I understand there is someone here to receive this proclamation honoring Homeless Awareness Month. Attention, let's see, is my understanding, Joe Flo, John Flo, I'm sorry, I had to, should have read another line tonight, I had you, John. I'd like to come down and read it to you at the podium if I could. Okay, again, this is a proclamation honoring homelessness awareness month. A lot of whereas is here. Whereas, homelessness is a challenge that has existed in Marysville, across the state, and throughout the nation for many decades, impacting the lives of individuals and families, many of whom come from our own neighborhoods. And whereas, Marysville partners with numerous public and private agencies to develop solutions to homelessness that truly address the underlying situations for each individual who finds himself or herself homeless. And whereas, since 2015, Marysville and its partners have been rapidly implementing shelter and housing programs that are designed with best practices to resolve homelessness. And whereas, programs such as 14 Forward, the Life Building Center, and the Coordinated Entry System have been achieving success as collaborative resources added within the last six years, increasing shelter, shelter beds, and housing stock. And whereas, we recognize that many of those living on the streets are people from our own community, who fell into hard times and endured other difficult situations that carried them into homelessness, and that it often takes the strength of the whole community to help them regain hope and independence. And whereas, it is important to educate the public about the many reasons people are homeless, including the shortage of available housing for very low-income residents, and to encourage support for homeless assistance service providers, as well as community service opportunities through monitoring and relationship building. And whereas, the people of the city of Marysville recognize the homelessness, that homelessness continues to be a serious problem for hundreds of individuals and families in the region, and that we as a community cannot stand idly by as long as this struggle continues. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Marysville City Council hereby joins in recognition of Homelessness Awareness Month and encourages all citizens to be aware that many people do not have housing and need support from residents, as well as private and public services. And I was very proud to fix my signature to this proclamation in recognition of this homelessness awareness month. Mr. Flo, would you like to say a few words?
Please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, you bet.
Mayor Branscombe, and, thank you, sir. And honorable council members, we really appreciate the work that you put into helping us with the homeless issue in terms of support and understanding and working with the consortium. My name is John Flo, I'm the member of the board for the Continuum of Care, and have been, been a member of the board since 2007. And so we've been working with this issue for a long time, as you know, and what we really appreciate from you, the city of Marysville, the people, the businessmen, businesswomen, all the constituents that live here, of the kindness and compassion that's shown in working with individuals that, that are struggling. So we deeply appreciate your support and want to thank you, because it's not as of just of today that you've been in support. You've been in support of us for a long time as a council, so I really deeply appreciate that, and thank you so much for your support.
Is anybody on the council having comments?
I'd like to thank you for your work. It's a difficult task. I know that you and our staff, Chief Sacks specifically, are working with the Homeless Consortium, and I just appreciate all you guys' work to try and help the people that want to be helped. Thank you.
Again, oh, he got out. Well, appreciation to Mr. Flo. Next, we have, and hopefully it'll be an informative workshop that will help educate the council and our community about small cell technology related to 5G deployment. We will have two experts presenting information, 15 minutes given to each side for a total of 30 minutes for this workshop. There will be no public comment, that's right, no public comment during the informational presentations. It is my understanding that the previous group that represented public concern has an expert here tonight. Would you please introduce, bring yourself to the podium, the, let's see, we have the public concern. No, this is not public comment, this is the expert, are you the expert for the, on 5G? Yeah. You want to press that little button down there so we can hear you and, and point the microphone, get the microphone pointer right at you so we get good sounds, Stephanie. Introduce yourself.
Yes, my name is Stephanie McKenzie. I'm a resident of Marysville, and are you able to hear me well?
Thank you.
Okay.
And the clerk will give a one-minute warning when the 15-minute clock is ticking down, and then there'll be a hard stop at 15.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Situate myself here. Well, we previously had had special guests speak the first time who were experts, and they were not available tonight, so I did collect some information from other people who have provided that to me, and so I'm going to share that information with you and the concerns that I have also brought. One thing I'd like to say at the outset that was brought up in the original meeting was that Greg Lean said that 5G does, it does amazing things, there's amazing capabilities, it's very high-speed and can do great things, but it, small cell deployment is not the only way that it can be implemented, it can be implemented through fiber-optic cables, which currently UBS City and Sutter County are working with SciFi Networks LLC to deploy that in UBS City and Sutter County. I have an email from the city manager's office for UBS City that I will forward to you that has links to that information, and I know that they'd be happy to also talk with our city manager about that and give you more information, but that is currently underway, and that is also a possibility for Marysville, so it does not have to be small cells, which EMF radiation has been proven to cause many health, negative health effects in addition to cancer, not just cancer. So I'm just going to read through my notes and see where we get. Wanted, what I wanted to visit, what UBS City said, in their resolution about choosing to use fiber optics was, their first bullet was, one of their identified goals as a city council was to maintain the quality of life in UBS City, and I think that's one of the big concerns here, is to maintain a quality of life for the residents of Marysville. The FCC limits that are mentioned often by the telecommunications companies, that they are under those limits, those FCC limits for EMFs are, exceed, they're set at a higher level than actually where there are demonstrated health, adverse health effects. So they're experiencing, they're seeing health effects at a much lower level than is actually permitted by the FCC, and actually, New Hampshire did a study, and I'm going to read something from their, their study. "The commission has heard from many experts on both sides of the argument concerning the health and environmental effects of 5G and RF radiation in general. Reviewed councils, countless study reports attempted to get direct answers to our specific questions from the FCC and other federal agencies to no avail. Has become aware of a number of lawsuits against FCC for not accounting for biological effects in the setting of their standards. Is still not certain why the standards for acceptable RF radiation are set so much higher in the United States than other industrialized nations. Is concerned that the modulation of frequencies and the combined effect of the soup of RF waves surrounding us today, which will likely increase with time, is aware that there is much research showing potential health risks and understands that much more research is required. Is cognizant that, that our country historically has been beset by examples of products being declared safe only later to be proven unsafe, and is very aware that the World Health Organization and the whole insurance industry are hedging their bets against, against RF radiation because of potential harm. Given these considerations, the majority of the commission yields to the precautionary principle in formulating many of these recommendations. These recommendations cover a broad range of topics. One topic, given much consideration, has to do with liability for potential harm caused by small cell antenna placed on the public rights away. Majority of the commission could not agree upon a recommendation surrounding this topic." But they are choosing the precautionary principle, which is what I'm, I'm hoping that our council also choose to do. We have local economies that rely on a healthy environment. 5G radiation is proven to damage forests, wherever there are cell towers, there's tree die-off around there. The attorney who spoke last time is representing the city of South Lake Tahoe against the telecommunications company because they're afraid of the damage to the pine forests up there. But we have our local farming economies, we have our, we have wildlife recreation opportunities. 5G has been shown to harm bird populations, fish populations, also bees. It limits the bees' ability to find their way back home. The evening that we were here, the first time speaking, Nikki was looking at our lavender bushes and saw all kinds of bees on there, and she said, oh, there's five varieties of bees, I just saw bees, but she said five varieties, there must be beekeepers around here, and I thought, oh, yeah, there are, but they're not in the city of Marysville, they're out in the county around the orchards, and so if they're coming into the city to forage, there, if we were to have a lot of 5G small cell radiation, that they could potentially harm the bees and our, the bee businesses and our farming crops, so that is not desired outcome for us. In our safety element, Marysville General Plan Safety Element has a provision that would prevent us from doing anything that would endanger the health of the agricultural lands surrounding us, so I think that's something we should look at as well when we're talking about this. International Association of Firefighters actually is fighting against having cell towers placed on properties where they're sleeping 24 hours a day because of the health effects that are shown there. There's recently, the FCC lost, and it's been ordered to update their safety limits because they have not done so since 1996, and the court held that the FCC failed to respond to record evidence that exposure to RF radiation at levels well below the commissioners, commission's content, current limits may cause negative health effects. So they've been court-ordered to update that and to acknowledge the, the effects. 5G cell towers are more dangerous than earlier cell tower generations, because they expose us to a wider variety of RF radiation frequencies. Not only do they emit the higher 5G microwave frequencies between 24 gigahertz to 300 gigahertz, but they emit many of the lower 2G, 3G, and 4G frequencies as well, between 1 gigahertz to 6 gigahertz. Also, the smaller millimeter waves of 5G have been shown to cause harm to skin, eyes, immune system, and our bacterial antibiotic resistance. They are known to absorb oxygen and are believed to interfere with oxygen absorption within our lungs. One thing I wanted to mention, Adventist Health, you might be familiar with the Blue Zones Project that they are implementing, and one of those things is having to help the community, so I think that would add to our wanted quality of life, and there are more than 90 cities in the United States that have filed briefs to, against FCC and their EMF standards that are exceeding what's considered healthy for our community. I think if we want to be cooperating with creating and maintaining a healthy community, we would be concerned about not wanting to add more radiation to our environment. There's lots of cities and nations that are saying no to this. One thing we can do is to say no to residential areas around schools, and a lot of these cautions are because it's untested and they haven't been studied, but the studies that have been done have all shown harm to humans and plants and animals. One thing I think is a concern in the community is if we allow a contractor to go out and solicit people in neighborhoods, you could have, you know, my, my next-door neighbor could say, yeah, I love a small cell in my house, but then what if I don't want to be exposed to that? I lose my opportunity to have choice about what's in my environment around me, and really, I think the city could be exposing itself to lawsuits if they aren't cautious about how this is done, if it is done. In one of, Greg Lean and Nikki Florio speak often for communities and testifying about these things. In one of the events that they held for a city, there was military, in the military, 5G is used as a weapon, and in one, a military exercise that was done, they had captured some soldiers, it was a former military person testifying at this event, and he said they captured so many of their soldiers, they, the soldiers were there with their hands up, and they directed a frequency of 5G frequency at them, they lost control of their bowels, their bladder, just on the spot. So 5G can be modulated, the frequencies can be modulated to manipulate emotional states, physical states, and cause harm, and cause people to not be able to control the way they're feeling, thinking, and acting. It, one quote from a military member in, I don't know which war, I think it was in World War II, they used 5G, it said, he said, "It cooked eyes, your eyeballs, like eggs." And one of the things I think they had mentioned before was that it causes cancers, because it's a millimeter wave, it penetrates your skin. I'm not sure the depth, it might be two millimeters or centimeters, but it causes skin cancers, eye cancers, and cancers of the testicles. So, among other unpleasant things. This, this little set of sheets is a list of countries and cities that have said notify G because of the negative adverse health effects, and many of them are in California and the United States, but all over the world. Here's one, a statement from one of the communities I thought was interesting. "Bad Wies," I'm not, I'm, no, I'm not pronouncing that right, "has a long-established reputation as a popular destination for health and well-being, and this informs the present and future decision-making of the council. Many of our visitors come here seeking medical treatments, physical rehabilitation, or simply to improve their well-being, and most, if not all, of our town's prosperity depends on providing such services. As such, the council takes its responsibilities in protecting and promoting health tourism very seriously. At a public meeting, the council unanimously decided to oppose the rollout of the untested 5G network. The council felt a great sense of responsibility toward both residents and visitors in taking this decision, given the significance of Bad Wies as a health destination. 5G offers many things that are attractive to people who love technology such as time-saving automation, autonomous vehicles, ubiquitous smart homes, real-time data transfer, and the Internet of Things, to name a few. The 5G also means increasing the number of cell towers in Germany, so this is in Germany, from 90,000 to 750,000, launching approximately 12,005 satellites into space, and on and on. Seen potential liability claims against owners of cell tower locations chopping down trees on a large scale, as well as irradiating, irradiating plants and animals. Above all, there is uncertainty about whether 5G can be considered safe in terms of public health. It's a very serious matter, until such uncertainties adequately clarified, the precautionary principle must be applied." And it goes on with more of that, but I thought that is really significant, that I think what our goals here also are to have the community where people want to come, where you can be healthy and happy, part of our economy relies on healthy people, and so we should consider our public health. This is a public health issue. Some of the cities in the United States that have said no to this are Los Altos, California, Tennessee, District of Columbia, California, as a state, Portland, Oregon, Louisiana, Encinitas, New York. They're studying 5G, so lots of places all over the country, all over the world, saying no. This is part of a larger part that I believe was emailed to the council after the first presentation that we did, and these are excerpts from the New Hampshire report. "Over 393 scientists and doctors from 35 countries have signed on to a declaration called the 5G Appeal, sent to officials of the European Commission calling for a moratorium on the increase of cell antennas for planned 5G expansion, because 5G will substantially increase exposure to radio-frequency electromagnetic, electromagnetic fields on top of 2G, 3G, 4G, Wi-Fi, et cetera, already in place. RF, EMF has been proven to be harmful for humans and the environment." And they've said, talked about plant material absorbing the radiation, so that would mean your backyard gardens or anything that's growing or, in our farming community or in the city of Marysville would be absorbing radiation. It mentions, here, they, they provided that they would not deploy a small cell on a fire department facility, only for our firemen to it, I think we should have a cell right there where they...
Is that a minute?
One minute, all right. Here's a report from one of the scientists. "RF and 5G radiation increases cell deaths and diverts cell toward, cells toward necrosis and apoptosis." So it basically destroys your cells. And so with all of these things, there's so much more here. This binder is absolutely available to the council to copy anything from it, be happy to share, there's a lot in here. But basically, there, there has not been any study that's been done, at least in this information that has found EMF and 5G and other technologies like that to be without harm to humans and animals and the environment. So I think that we should take all those things into consideration and look into the fiber-optic option, that might be much safer while still affording the benefits of 5G for Marysville. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I understand we have another speaker, if you would introduce yourself. And there's a button at the base of that apparatus in front of you. There you go, it's working.
Good, thank you. Mayor Branscombe, council members, my name is Bill Hammett. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of California and other states, and manage a firm of 18, we're located down in Sonoma County. A regular part of our practice is the calculation or the measurement of radio-frequency exposure conditions. We do this work for, for carriers, for cities, for landlords. Our job as engineers is really straightforward, what are the exposure levels and how do they compare to the federal standards? And I'm going to take a few minutes and go through some of the background of information on this that I think is relevant to what you're considering, considering tonight. I note that I've been in this field for 36 years, during that time I've evaluated more than 20,000 sites. McGraw-Hill has published my book on this topic, Greater Frequency of Radiation Issues and Standards, and I do speak often on this topic. The commenter, I guess it was in the agenda, talks about other side, an expert from either side, and I'm not on any side. As an engineer, I just represent the facts as I know them. I'm not an advocate for anything before you this evening, I'm not an opponent of anything before this evening. I'm here simply to provide information and answer whatever questions I can on, on that information. Let's go to the next slide. Nicole has volunteered to run the slides, which I appreciate. That is my bio that I just provided. And let's go to the next slide, please. When I, when I do trainings and things for, for, in a lot of situations, I often start with this. It's a very simple diagram to show that when you make a call, it's the last link that's wireless. So on the left, somebody is making a phone call, it goes up to something on a light pole, for instance. It doesn't go from there by air anyplace, it goes down into the ground into a fiber network, goes over to a switching station somewhere in town, there's a nice-looking building probably with no windows on it, where they used to do all the telephone connections, and it's now all, all done by computer, and it may go to a different city via fiber. In that other city, there's another switching station, it goes back through fiber again to a pole in this instance, and to a car. It's the last link on each side that's wireless, we're not talking about anything else in between. So just want to set, give that quick demonstration. But let's set the, the situation, set the topic if we can. Congress got involved in the issue of, of deployment of cell sites. The nineteen ninety-six telecommunications act signed by Bill Clinton established a preemption on local jurisdictions from applying anything tighter than the federal limits on health and safety. And if we go to the next slide, I'll, this is the, the section, the relevant section from that, from that bill. It's an act of Congress. No state or local government or instrumentality thereof may regulate the placement, construction and modification of personal wireless service facilities on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions. And here's the key part, to the extent that such facilities comply with the commission's regulations concerning those emissions. What that means is that if it meets the federal standards, if it meets the FCC's limits, then the question of health is off the table and can't be used as a basis for denying or modifying or limiting the deployment of these facilities. The city, and I'm sure your city attorney is up on all of this. The city has, has jurisdiction in a lot of ways, but not on the question of, of health and safety. Let's go to the next slide. What actually happened when, when Congress passed this bill in ninety-six was the FCC was, was told you will go adopt a standard. And the FCC said, well, we do interference issues and then frequency assignments and coverage issues. So they went to the EPA and the EPA said, well, we don't have a standard. And so they ended up adopting a combination of two standards, NCRP eighty-six and ANSI nineteen ninety-two. And those were blended together to be what the FCC adopted. Bulletin O E T sixty-five nineteen ninety-seven is the document that, that they released. Nineteen ninety-seven, you heard a comment that this is old, old science, they haven't updated it. Well, in fact, the, the, the document, the IEEE standard was updated in nineteen ninety-nine. It was updated again in two thousand and five, it was just updated in two thousand and nineteen. So let's go to the next slide. This is really current science. The conclusion from the, from the IEEE standard, which is what the FCC is, is, has been referenced. There is no credible indication of adverse effects caused by chronic exposures below levels specified in the standard. After seventy years of RF research, low level biological effects have not been established. That's from twenty-five hundred studies that have been done for over decades. And this is the finding of the standard setting body, the, on, on this topic. So it's current science, there are lots of studies, this is what the experts find. ICHN, that's the International Commission on Non-Ionizing Radiation Protection. That's what the European countries use. And they, they updated their standard last year in twenty twenty. There is no evidence of adverse health effects at exposure levels below the restriction levels in their nineteen ninety-eight guidelines. And that's what they're finding is that those original guidelines were sufficiently tight that there have been no verified reports of adverse impact. And the FDA chimed in as well, there's no quantifiable causal link between RF exposure and tumor formation. And if you go to the American Cancer Society website and others, other websites, you'll get the same type of information. What I want to do now is talk a little bit, and I've got time for questions here at the end, which I would look forward to. I want to talk a little bit about the deployment of small cells and why the exposure levels are as low as they are. There are fractions of, of the exposure standard. Hundred percent of being the standard, we might find one or two percent in locations. And we've measured it at all, many, many locations. So let's go to the next slide. Reason number one is the narrow antenna pattern. This microphone is picking up my voice from any angle. It's an omnidirectional receiving antenna for my voice. A light bulb and your, a reading lamp in your house sends the energy out equally in all directions. But that's not the case with these, they have physical dimension to them. They'll stand two feet tall typically and, and width of a page. That allows them to focus the energy down and serve certain directions, which is more for efficiency, so they can reuse their frequencies. But more importantly, the height of the antenna, a couple of feet, allows it to focus down and push it out toward the horizon. There's hundreds or a thousand times less going down than there is going out toward the horizon. Thousand times less than goes, goes out. What that means is that they're trying to push the signal halfway to the next cell site, the next small cell. And as a consequence of this, there's very little energy going down. So if you're in the house, as an example, these are typically on a light pole or some structure that's above the residences, above businesses. So that's one factor. The other factor is the basic law of physics called the inverse square law. And let's go to the next slide. With increasing distance, power density decreases exponentially. And we'll talk about that. So at one unit of distance, we have one unit of power density. If we go to the next slide, here now, we're at two units of distance. The power density has gone down by a factor of four, two squared. It's only one quarter of the power, just dropping rapidly. Let's go to the next one. If we go ten times as far away, goes down by a factor of a hundred, ten squared. So the power is dropping very rapidly from these facilities, just the nature of the distribution of energy. We use a bucket truck when we take measurements at small cell sites. We can go up and observe with our meters exactly this phenomenon. It's a very well understood fact. So the, the narrow antenna patterns and the inverse square law are two of the key reasons why the exposure levels are as low as they, as we actually project them to be and find them to be. The third factor is just that it's a low power facility. As I was driving up seventy, I could see the big tall towers, one had five layers of antennas on it. Those are what the industry calls macro antenna facilities. And they send a lot of energy out. And that's not what these small facilities are. They're intended as small cells to cover small areas. It allows for reuse of the frequencies, it's more efficient, provides better coverage directly in the, in the areas where they're deployed. I want to talk a little bit about, about five G. Let's go to the next slide. Five G, unlike what some of the comments you may have heard, is simply a, an encode, a technique for encoding data on the radio waves. With the, the phones were analog in the nineteen eighties, then there was a two Gs, that's the second generation. It was digital, the third generation, four G LTE, that's what everybody seems to be using now. Five G is the new one and I put a little dot, 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 because people keep getting better at better at encoding data on the radio waves. I often speak about color TV. When color TV came out, they was on the same frequency band. They just got better at putting color on and it doesn't bring much bills with anybody these days. But this is what five G is, is simply an encoding technique. Now, you, my phone gets five G, it also gets four G and then it probably also gets three G. It's, it's legacy service. So that if a carrier is, is deploying a site, they, they use the frequencies that are on customer phones. And so they didn't, now that they have a, a better coding technique called five G, they didn't immediately put it on all the phones, because then your phones wouldn't work. So we still have three G phones and four G phones and five G phones. So the, I just want to make the point that the conversion was not immediate because of the, of the number of, of uses, of using phones and tablets. Let's go to the next slide. At the same time, the five G was being rolled out and, and adopted. The FCC opened up new frequency bands called millimeter wave frequencies. There were no existing subscriber devices in those bands. So they didn't have to go through three G and four G to get there. They just went straight to the most efficient technique. So in the millimeter wave bands, it's, it's only five G. But five G is used in the cellular band, one of the original bands from the nineteen eighties. Eventually, like they went to four G, they're going to go to five G on all the frequency bands. So there's nothing unique about five G, five G was not used in World War Two. The five G is a new latest technique for encoding data on the radio waves. So we have to be clear what we're talking about. Let's go to the next slide. This is a look at the electromagnetic spectrum. And as, as it is on, on the left-hand side, that's is very low, low frequencies. One change per second is, is what one corresponds to, it's the number of cycles per second. E L F, extremely low frequency, sixty hertz is what your, the outlets operate on or the fluorescent lights are operating on. The, 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 the power transmission lines are sixty hertz. And sometimes you can hear sixty hertz in, in a quiet evening when the transformer up on the pole, you can hear it. Not, not everybody recognizes that, but that's in the sound range and our ears are sensitive to it. Because it's, it's, it's pressure in, in that frequency range, twenty to twenty thousand cycles is what we can hear when we're young. There's a chunk called radio frequency and we'll talk about that as you get higher and higher in frequency. This is just a, a spectrum, there's infrared, which we use to control our TVs. So if you try to control your TV when you put it down behind the sofa, it doesn't work real well. It's line of sight, it's a very tighter, tighter wavelength as you go at higher and higher in frequency. There's a little tiny sliver in this, in this electromagnetic spectrum. We call it light because our eyes happen to be sensitive to it. It's smaller than what I've shown up there, above that is ultraviolet. And ultraviolet is the start of what's called ionizing radiation. And what does ultraviolet do if you get exposed to ultraviolet? I know this is a presentation and not a question and answer and not Socratic method. You get sunburn. It's one of the things that'll happen with ultraviolet. If the wavelength is so short, it'll get into a molecule and break off electron, that's called ionization. X-rays, you go into the dentist to have an X-ray taken and what do they do? They put a lead shield over you. And where do they stand when they push the button? Stand around. This is ionizing energy. The wavelength is so short, it breaks off electrons and it's a well-understood distinction, non-ionizing versus ionizing. And ionizing causes a little bit of damage over time. I can't go out in the sun anymore from my arms being sunburned so much growing up. It's, it causes damage. So we need to be clear that what you're talking about with these small cells is not gamma rays. It's not X-rays, it's not ultraviolet, it's not light, it's not infrared. It's down on this chunk of non-ionizing frequencies called radio frequencies, because they're good for communications purposes. There are a few selected frequencies I've noted on here in, that are, are used. Millimeter wave is, is the furthest on the right, but it's, it's in this chunk of frequencies called radio frequencies. And if we have questions, we can talk a little bit more about that. One minute, great. I, I just want to comment that that five G is, is, there's nothing dangerous about five G per se. It's, it's just a coding technique. It wasn't used in World War Two. The standards are, are current standards, I know they were adopted in ninety-six, but they've been updated as we talked about. All studies have shown harm was a comment that you heard. That's not, not true. When you do scientific work, you look at a range of exposure levels. And the key findings of the standard setting bodies is that at exposure levels equal to their standard or below, there's no quantifiable risk, no adverse impact. Above those, yes, you get impacts and that's why they have standards. Okay, the FCC standards. Thank you, I'm happy to answer questions.
We will be getting into this topic as on a formal agenda item next and there may be cause to direct questions at that point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Okay, well, thank you for those presentations. Kathy, are you, you're going to present?
I am.
Oh, well, you're going to present on agenda item two?
Yes.
You're ahead of things. Well, actually, right on, no, no, stay there. Okay. I have something to read here in advance of a public hearing. This will be a public hearing, all matters in this section of the agenda are formal public hearings and will be acted on individual, individually. Members of the public may request to speak when called upon for public comment. If you'd like to comment and you're attending this meeting in person, please complete a speaker card and return that to the city clerk. And when called upon, go to the podium to address the council. If you're participating via Zoom and would like to speak, please raise your hand via Zoom. When called upon by the city clerk, you will be unmuted and you can address the council. Whether you are here in person or attending via Zoom and called upon, please give your name clearly for audio recording. If you have any documentation you'd like to share with the council, please mail it to city clerk five twenty-six C Street, Marysville nine five nine oh one. Okay, this is agenda item number two, small cell wireless telecommunications facilities ordinance and processing guidelines. The recommendation, and this P is will be speaking this recommendation, pass a motion to hold a public hearing to review and consider, one, introducing an ordinance to allow wireless telecommunications facilities in the public right of way. Two, adopting a resolution amending the fee schedule, establishing a small cell wireless telecommunications facilities reservation fee. Three, adopting a resolution approving the submittal and general procedures for the installation of small cells in public right of way. And four, approving the master lease agreement with AT&amp;T to locate small cell facilities within the city. For further information, contact Mr. Jim Shad, city manager. His number and email addresses are listed on our website. And Ms. Pease, you are presenting on this matter, thank you.
Yes, good evening, mayor and members of the council. I'm Kathy Pease, a planning consultant with Management Advisory Services. This end, agenda item includes several actions and ordinance for small cells, a proposal for a reservation fee and process to reserve sites in the public right of way, adoption of submittal and design guidelines and amendment to the fee schedule to allow small cell facilities in the public right of way and a master lease agreement, and I'll be discussing these items. So we've already heard a little bit about this in the previous agenda item. Small cell facilities again include equipment needed to provide cellphone telecommunications coverage in the area. We also heard that small cells are regulated by the federal government and local jurisdictions have little ability to deny an application. Next slide. It is proposed the city adopt an ordinance which outlines the requirements for small cell facilities within the public right of way, including the process, a reservation fee, requirements for a master lease agreement, as well as ongoing monitoring requirements. Any carrier that is interested in locating equipment in the city's right of way would require a master lease agreement. As part of the actions tonight, AT&amp;T has approached the city with a request to install wireless facilities. So a master lease agreement has been prepared. This requires encroachment permits and a process to reserve the location. Once a carrier comes into the city, they would request a reservation. The city would confirm that a utility pole is available. The applicant would be allowed to reserve the pole for ninety days. During this period, the carrier would conduct a small cell analysis to determine if the pole location is suitable. If within ninety days, the applicant elects to move forward with this reservation, the applicant may secure an encroachment permit and the ninety dollar fee would be credited towards that permit. If the applicant decides not to move forward, the fee and reservation would be forfeited and the pole would be returned to the pool of available street poles for other carriers. So as part of this package, a handout was prepared which outlines the submittal requirements, including location screening, looking for the, the expectations for the installation. So we would like them screened as much as possible, have noise limitations and other things. Two new fees are proposed with this. One is the reservation fee that I indicated. We also are looking at a lease fee, it would be two hundred and seventy dollars per year with a three percent yearly adjustment for the right to use city-owned equipment. As you've heard, there has been extensive community concern regarding five G technology. However, it should be noted again that proposed small cell facilities will be well below the FCC threshold. Equipment will be placed on poles, so it will not be at street levels, so exposure would be minimal. Ongoing monitoring will be required to ensure that the standards are met. Since the poles are existing, the installation of small cell facilities is exempt from the California. Since the poles are existing, the installation of small cell facilities is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Again, requested actions tonight are adoption of an ordinance, adoption of a reservation fee and yearly fees, lease fee, excuse me, adoption of submittal requirements and approval of a master lease agreement. And that concludes my presentation.
I have a question actually on what we're doing here tonight, to be exact. It says pass a motion to hold a public hearing to review and consider. Is that what we're passing tonight? That's not that we're passing an ordinance?
We are passing.
We are passing the ordinance?
Correct.
Okay, this doesn't look like it's written that way.
That tripped me up too.
Pardon me?
I thought it was the same thing.
Yeah. I'm on a, on a fee schedule. It says ninety dollar reservation, which I'm not sure what that means and two hundred and seventy dollars a pole. Is that, or two hundred and seventy dollars, is that per pole per year per what?
Per pole per year, exactly.
And, and is there a proposed amount of poles at this time?
There is an exhibit that was prepared that shows the potential pole locations. So what would happen is if a carrier came into the city and said they'd like to install three, you know, in a certain location, staff would look at that location map and make sure that those poles were available. And then, then if they do look like they'll work, we would reserve that pole for them, for the carrier, to then make sure that that pole works for them as well.
So could multiple carriers then come in and ask for the same thing?
Yes, and we anticipate that could happen. So there are a limited number of poles that are available. And so the city would keep track of those as folks come in.
Okay. I don't know if you'll know this one, but the gentleman that spoke might. So it, would there be a limit of how many poles that would go into a city and i- is there an issue with the more poles you get, the more issues that people will be afraid of?
Thank you for the question. I can answer from a theoretical standpoint. I suspect you have AT&amp;T here this evening who can answer questions about their plans for rolling it out. We don't do the design work for picking poles or any of that. We just do.
My question would be, is there a within a certain amount of pole, as we do additional poles or sites, does what you're describing to us become greater, lesser? Is it even affected?
It's barely affected. By, by definition, it becomes more. If you have one site a few hundred feet away and you've got a site here, they're, they're far enough away that there's very little additive impact. But at the maximum that might occur in between the two, you might be getting half a percent from one and half a percent from other. It's still a very low number, still in compliance with the standard by a wide margin.
So, so the number of, of, of poles would not affect the standard?
That's correct. If you had them on every single pole, which I doubt anybody's proposing, it would still comply with the standards.
Okay. One more question, if you don't mind from him?
Yeah, and to add to that, as part of our process, we're only allowing the reservation of five cell locations at a time.
Five, okay. Another question quickly here. Currently, there are 5G phones.
Yes.
Correct? So if I had a 5G phone at this time, would I be receiving 5G signals from out of the area?
Probably not. The 5G frequencies, the, in the millimeter wave band do not travel very well. They're heavily attenuated, which is why they're not actively used for the big broadcast facilities. They don't go that far. So it would require an existing 5G facility within a few blocks in order for your phone to be picking that up and using it.
Okay, so lastly, if, if you're sitting at Oracle Park watching a ballgame, they have 5G. Is, is that contained within that or does it, it goes out a certain distance or around it, correct?
It does. And we've taken measurements in there from behalf of the owners. And it's throughout the facility. They're in the overhead areas, they're under the seats, their transmitter's all over because everybody's on the phone, everybody's using it, taking photographs and everything. So it's one of the highest concentrations. High schools are often in a similar concentration of demand. But at a place like that, there are facilities all over the place and all the exposure levels, we've actually been to games in order to take measurements in their real conditions. And those are all well, well in compliance.
Okay, you just threw me on one thing there, that's all. Being there, you said there's transmitters everywhere? You said below seats, blah, 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 whatever. So is, is where are we worrying about a point, if we were worrying about a danger point? Where are we worrying about that? At the top of the pole or under your seat?
The facilities under the seat are such low power that they're covering just half a row or a few rows up and down. They're very low-power facilities, so you can be right up next to the facility and be in compliance with the standard. We find that at most of these small cells. We go up with our measuring equipment and they're intrinsically compliant with the FCC rules because there's just not enough energy coming out to, to equal the standard.
Okay. Thank you.
Good job, sir. So I appreciate Bruce's, Councilman, but of all these questions and so forth. Something that was presented by Kathy and you, sir, was a statement stating that we don't seem to have local control over this. It seems as though that our government has created rules and regs that we are not able to bark at this too much. Please reiterate that from both perspectives.
Certainly, and it's, it's principally a legal question and I assume your city attorney is, is versed on, on those issues. It's been, if it complies, if a facility complies with a federal standard, then its, its condition of, of potential health is off the table. You can't regulate it on that, on that basis. It's, it's a, a simple threshold question. Does it comply or doesn't it?
So, sir, you said that from the nineteen ninety seven rule, it's been checked for the IEEE. Every couple of years they come forth. It hasn't changed too, too much. And because of the fact that the current industry is stating that it's underneath the federal threshold, we got nada on that. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes. And so the, the statement that a city has prohibited 5G, that's not going to hold up. And I'm not an attorney. You, you have one, but it's not going to hold up because the, the congressional preemption is against the modification of the facilities, the placement of the facilities, the, the method by which the carriers choose to send the signal out, whether it's 4G or 5G or 3G, whatever it is, those are, are issues that are not subject to review by the city. Those are the, the carriers' own issues for design.
News to me, thank you. So the presentation by all three of you that came up. Ms. McKinsey said that there are communities that have gone against the federal wishes. Stephanie, can you allude to that? Do you have any information on that? You said there was like Los Altos, there was Tennessee, Columbia, California, things. Those, those are the communities you said that are not what, allowing this to happen? Or do we have any more information on that?
Mill Valley was one. Let me find this pamphlet.
Sure. If you got that, sir, appreciate it.
Because you can't hear me. So it's the town of Los Altos, California. And what the town of Los Altos, California wanted to do was to, they, they did not approve the
Ordinance.
Ordinance, because there was an older ordinance from two thousand and eleven. And there were four issues that they had concerns with and they have them right here.
We don't need to go to the weeds.
So, yeah, no, it's not about keeping 5G from going into Los Altos. It's to make sure that it's aesthetically pleasing. There was concern about fires. There are four issues. One of them was they hadn't updated their ordinance when they went to, they hadn't done what we're doing today.
So forgive me, sir, the curb appeal didn't meet that community standard, so therefore they did not allow it to happen.
Well, it's, it, they've changed it. They fixed it. It's like there's about eighteen different articles.
And again, thank you, sir. I'm just kind of curious, just to, you know, not, not go around it. It sounds as though there's still no legal recourse for those communities to stop it from happening. They just have local jurisdictions that they wanted it to be pleasing aesthetically on their poles and so forth.
Yeah, the legal recourse they did have, the town did have at the time, was over an outdated ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Stephanie, did you get anything more to say? Legal recourse that those particular communities had?
No, I don't. And you know what? I apologize. We really wanted to have Attorney Greg Lean here tonight. He wasn't available and so I'm the sitting replacement who's not the expert. So I would direct any other questions like that. If we have more questions, he would be more capable of answering those and would do a better job than I would at this point. So I apologize that I'm not able to be of better help with that.
It's a lesson for most of us here this evening. I'm just trying to figure out what the information is presented to us tonight.
And I know that Greg would be happy to answer any other questions too, like that as far as the, you know, the frequency acceptable levels and all those kinds of things. I definitely am not able to answer those kinds of things.
So, so Kathy, did you get something to inject on that, please? Thank you, Stephanie.
Yes, so the reason we are here is to do an ordinance so that we do have control over design, so that we have this middle requirement, so that we can do as much as we can to make sure that the facilities that are placed in the public right of way are as, you know, aesthetically pleasing as possible and have the least amount of impacts. And part of the ordinance is requiring ongoing monitoring, so we are assured if they go in that they are meeting the standards. So that's the only clarification I wanted to make.
So our ordinance is only going to emphasize the ability of the, the curb appeal aesthetics, not necessarily the actuality of the federal government doing whatever they want, based upon the rules.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Kathy.
My questions are more comments. If you have a if you have a radar detector in your car, as I do, it will get lit up occasionally by X-band, which is seven to eleven gigahertz, and they're cellular in that band. It'll get lit up by K-band, which is eighteen to twenty-seven gigahertz, and I think so, these carriers are using that band. V-band, which is sixty gigahertz, which they're using. V-band is used by the military, by the Navy for secure ship-to-ship communications because the range is no more than a quarter mile because just the water vapor in the air absorbs the signal and it dies at a quarter mile, so they can have secure communication ship-to-ship. The K-band comes up because there's the radar. When you walk through a, a doorway and the door opens for you and you're not stepping on something, you walked into K-band radar. So we are exposed to these things every day. And the federal government is, you know, I'm not going to brace the federal government on everything, but this has been litigated, tested, and the safety concerns have been paramount. And I haven't, I've not encountered personally anything in my career. My career involved being the CEO of two companies that were engaged in RF communications at these frequencies. And I've never run into any real proof that they're causing a problem. Now, you get something, if you get a real high-power RF right next to your head, you might be in trouble. You stand in front of a, an air traffic control radar operating at X-band, you won't live long. It's just, it's, it's power and focus and distance and the inverse square laws. When you use the inverse square consideration in, in light of very low frequencies, it's hard to measure the power. So that wasn't much of a question, but I got my, I got my money's worth and I appreciate it. Let's see. With no further comments from the council question. Yes, sir, please.
And, and I was so basically what Councilman Hudson said was, we don't have control over what the federal government is doing. But it sounds like the way I'm interpreting that, tell me if I'm right or wrong, is that we wouldn't get control over it. So, so we would not be able to lessen the standard. Not necessarily if we wanted to more, but the, the government has the standard to set. And I'm assuming that that's a safety standard and a safety level.
Correct.
Okay.
I, I might ask. It may, maybe a question for the experts, but when we talk about federal government and the, the standards that were set, who is ANSI and who is IEEE?
ANSI is the American National Standards Institute. IEEE is the Institute of Electrical and Electronic Engineers.
Are they government entities?
No, the, the governmental entity was NCRP, National Congressional on National Committee on Radiation Protection. There was a congressionally chartered corporation back in the, in the late eighties. Otherwise, the government is adopting the standards that are set by independent bodies, whether in this country or abroad. The Ichner standard being an example of one that's done in Europe.
So these are independent bodies that do their own research and, and verify a bunch of different standards.
And actually, they don't do their own research. They look at the collection of the worldwide set of data that is published peer-reviewed journals.
Thank you.
Noting no further comments from the council. And public hearing is now open and we are ready for public comment.
Madam Clerk?
Our first speaker will be Genesis.
Genesis, welcome.
Hello, mayor, members of the council. It's been a while. I want to start off just by saying that the gentleman who came up and spoke, he said he doesn't have a side. Well, he's paid by someone to be here. And I want to say that the, the studies that we've seen, everyone has a motive. Everyone has personal responsibility, personal reasons that they do things. And, you know, the way that you set up studies, for example, my understanding is that the, the safety studies that we're talking about, these are based on heat. So if a cellphone, they're testing, you know, if it's, if it's too close to the head, how, how hot does the, does the, that portion of the head get, things like that, right? So, for example, that's the container that you set for these studies. Within that container, everything that you're, that you're studying is within that container. So who sets that container? So my point is, is that we all have motivations. We all have personal reasoning. You have your personal reasoning. It sounds like budget, you know, might, might be one of them. And safety certainly is, or else I believe you wouldn't be, you know, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have had Stephanie come up today. You wouldn't have had the other two experts come up the other day. So my suggestion is that instead of jumping ahead to a public hearing right now, just to, to jump into this thing, you know, are we going to do it? Are we not going to? And instead of taking the advice of someone who was paid by someone to be here, saying that there's nothing that we can do, why don't we take a closer look at what we might be able to do? Why don't we take a closer look at these safety things and not turn our heads? Because that's a, that's a road less traveled. Because it is important. We are talking about safety and these are real concerns. And I hope that we take that step. And I hope that we take that step. I hope that we take a little longer and really take our time and look at the data. Look at it for ourselves. Take that time to open it up and read it. See what others have done to be able to, you know, I don't want to say fight, but to go a different direction. What other alternatives are there? And it sounds like Uva City is, is taking a look at these things as well. So I ask that we take it slower, look at safety, and what can we do? Take a closer look at these things before we have a public hearing on whether to pass it or not. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have another speaker?
Our second speaker will be Courtney Ortega.
Welcome. Please state your name and what's on your mind.
Hi, my name's Courtney Ortega. So, um, I just wanted to, I wanted to make a comment because I find that a lot of times before, especially local government councils, that there are a lot of concerned citizens who voice their concerns. They talk through that, and oftentimes those people are ignored, just to be frankly honest with you guys. And I don't know why that is, because it's my understanding that you are all elected by your constituents, the city of Marysville. And your job primarily is to represent those people. And I don't know where that gets lost in translation, if you will, because I would think that as a representative of that district of those constituents, that public concern would be the utmost priority to you, even over, let's say, your own brilliance and your own, let's say, I don't know if, 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 if local officials think that they're so much more intelligent than their local constituents, that they, they know what's best for them. I would just, I would really like to see you guys make a plan that would ensure the public safety, just because with this technology, I would say that none of you could bet your lives on the fact. Hi. None of you guys could bet your lives on the fact of what we could expect from our community's health, from our, the environment surrounding us's health in the next ten years. And I just really hope that there is a lot of discretion regarding this, and it's not just something like, oh, the community, these guys are scared, it's this and this, but that there is real concern put into this and real individual study from you all to ensure that, because I do believe that it's your responsibility to to support and to represent your own constituents. So, thank you.
Thank you. Each speaker has three minutes. When you're elected to a position to sit at this table, you take incoming on various things, but to suggest, and it's been, the suggestion's been made a couple of times, ill-motivated or ill-informed is not a welcome argument. I mean, you can make the argument that the merits, the merits are what matter here, and we're welcome. We'll listen to anything for three minutes, but it's more effective if you stick to the merits. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next.
Our next speaker will be Donna Wahlberg.
Welcome. Welcome, ma'am.
Hello.
Thank you. Get that microphone over close to you.
Here today.
Hear you better.
You know, I was just looking at this. I've, I've read quite a bit about 5G, and I appreciate the information that was delivered here today. They're, they're definitely at odds as far as what the opinions are, as far as risks and benefits. My biggest comment here is I was looking at what the fees are, the lease fees, two hundred and seventy dollars a year, and we're talking about five poles and, you know, a ninety-dollar lease fee. I mean, less than fifteen hundred dollars. I mean, there's got to be more here that the city's going to benefit. I mean, what it just doesn't seem to me, when there is a controversy and the potential, I, I know that it's been said that you can't make or base a decision on health considerations, that you're restricted from doing that. I, I don't know. I haven't had a chance to look into that, but it just doesn't seem to me that the, for the controversy and the risk for the amount of money that the city will gain from it, it's just not worth taking a chance. That's all. I know maybe it's considered to be state-of-the-art, and, you know, everyone's going to benefit from high-speed internet and all that, but, I mean, how, how fast do we need to go? I know, I don't think my brain can go any faster than it's already moving with the internet that we have. I just think it's a bad idea, and I am against it, and I'd just like to let you know that. I hope you don't approve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk?
No further speakers tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Now to the council. Any further comments or questions? Councilman Belza?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple things I just want to make sure that I understand clearly, and maybe Nicole can speak to this, or some of our other speakers that are here tonight, but if we, if we don't pass an ordinance, then the communication companies still have the right to bring 5G into Marysville. Correct?
I'm not as well-versed on this as Brant is, but I believe that is absolutely correct. Yes.
Right. So, and I believe that it is too, from what I've read and what I've studied. So it doesn't have a matter of whether it's a health issue or whether it's a thing. It's, they have the right to contract, let's say, a power pole through PG&E or an existing telephone pole through AT&amp;T and put their equipment on that pole versus city infrastructure, right? Either way you go about it, they can do it whether we have the ordinance or not. So that basically makes it a mute question as to whether we can stop it or not stop it. Stopping it is not going to happen. The, the, and I want to just understand this clearly, so that in the ordinance that we pass and the, and the items that are within that ordinance, that allows us to control it as to how it maneuvers. There's a cap on how many poles can be applied at a time, five poles at a time, et cetera, et cetera. And so this is the way that we're actually able to control it, to make our best effort to try to preserve the health and welfare of our community, right? Otherwise, it's a free-for-all with the telecommunications companies. Am I correct on that assessment?
That is correct.
Okay. So I, I don't see any other route to go other than to try to control it in some capacity, because there's just, we're not going to be able to prevent it from coming in. And I, and I want to speak to, I think it was Ms. Ortega's comment, because you're a hundred and ten percent right, that we were elected to represent our constituents of this town, right, of Marysville. And when we were elected, we all, we've all stood here in these chambers, and we've put our right hand in the air, and we took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and to uphold the Constitution of the State of California. And that means that we don't have the liberty to create laws that supersede the laws that are federal laws or that are state laws. So there's no, it's not a matter of ignoring the constituency. I hear the concerns. I have some of my own concerns, but there's not an avenue to be able to prevent 5G from coming into our community legally. And it's not a matter of ignoring the constituency. It's a matter of upholding what we were elected to do, which was uphold those laws and create new policy and create policy that is in the best interest for the residents of Marysville. If we don't create the policy that we're looking at here, then we're not doing what we were elected to do. If we let it go and just leave it a wide-open playing field, then it's in some ways a free-for-all. So this is what we were elected to do. And on that grounds right there, regardless of whether there's a legitimate health issue or there's not, we've heard two arguing sides. This is the second time we've heard the arguing sides. I don't see any other way forward other than to move forward with an ordinance in the way that we have it. So that's, those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? No. Councilman Belza made a excellent, made excellent comments on the supremacy clause of the Constitution and supremacy and certain things. And can you imagine, can you imagine what it would be like if every city could make up its own rules on what RF propagation would be? Well, how could we conduct business? Nothing would ever get done. Nothing, nothing would ever be technology, good technology would not propagate throughout the United States. And so you have a federal agency, the FCC, informed by international agencies and other experts, and they come up with standards and human safety is at their paramount interest. And so who are we to have a better judgment of that? Now, I understand. I think people, I've known people who are concerned. I had a client when I was practicing law. She was worried about cell phones when they first came out in the eighties, and there's all these waves going through the air. By the way, Wi-Fi is a radio wave, and it goes to the air, and I don't know if you have Wi-Fi. You're getting RF energy propagated through your home. There's Wi-Fi in this building. It's being propagated right now through the air. So it's a fact of life, and there, I have not seen evidence to support the concerns, but I still understand the concerns. I respect the concerns. That said, I believe this is safe. So I'm going to reread the recommendation, and I'll try to fashion the wording, Mr. Bass, Mayor. Public hearing's now closed. Thank you very kindly. That's why we keep lawyers around. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. And the recommendation pass a motion, it says here to review and consider, but to approve is what we're actually doing, and ordinance to allow wireless telecommunications facilities in the public right of way. Two, adopting a resolution, amending the fee schedule, establishing a small cell wireless telecommunications facilities reservation fee. Three, adopting a resolution approving the submittal and general procedures for the installation of small cells in public right of way. And four, approving the master lease agreement with AT&amp;T to locate small cell facilities within the city. What is the will of the council?
Speaking of light, everything we're doing and so forth, if this is the only way that we're going to be able to restrict any sort of action that's happening, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? The mayor seconds the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, let's see, let's have a roll call vote, just in case.
Councilmember Belza?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilchrist?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Batakevoli?
Yes.
And Mayor Branson?
Yes, unanimous. And again, all those who are concerned, we hear you. We deliberated, and we did our best, and we, we're happy with our conclusion. Okay, we are now at the community consent calendar. And I have a paragraph to read here regarding that. Individuals wishing to address the city council concerning consent calendar items or on matters not already on the agenda are invited to make oral comments. Up to three minutes, if you'd like to comment. And you're attending in person, please complete a speaker's card and return it to the city clerk. When called upon, go to the podium and address the council. If you are participating via Zoom and would like to speak, please raise your hand via Zoom. When you're called upon by the city clerk, you'll be unmuted, and you can address the council, whether you are here in person or attending via Zoom. When called upon, please give your name clearly for audio recording. You are requested to address your comments to the council and not to the audience. By state law, the council is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. If you have any documentation that you would like to be distributed to the council, please mail it to the city clerk, 526 C Street, Marysville 95901. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker will be Donna Wahlberg. We just had to withdraw the request, so no public speakers.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can we approve to move? Move to approve. Excuse me. Second.
Oh, that's it. We're on the consent calendar already? We all jumped again. What, you guys got a bet on the? Allow me to just read this. Otherwise, I'll be in trouble with the city clerk. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine and therefore approved by one motion unless the council member or city manager first requests that a matter be removed from the consent calendar agenda for separate discussion and action. I understand there's a motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Okay, committee reports. Councilman Belza?
No reports at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Gilchrist?
No reports at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hudson?
I got nothing to report either.
Vice Mayor Batakevoli?
Nothing at this time, but I'll let you update with Ellis Lake this time.
I'll wait till after tomorrow. No reports at this time. I'm on the under. Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence other than what you shared with us earlier?
Not for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. City manager?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay, any comments or requests from the council beyond, above and beyond? You can raise your hand if you got one. Vice Mayor Batakevoli?
I just want to say, I, I think we were all there. I'm not sure if I saw Mr. Hudson or not at the Veterans Day Parade. But it was very successful. It always is, but I just want to thank the people that put that on in that celebration. I just, I think it's a fantastic event and was proud to be there to ride in it. And I, luckily, I, I got to ride with a veteran that with some good stories, some really good stories.
Couple things to say, and based off the clearing of the room, you know, maybe you were right in that the comment should be at the beginning instead of the end. But I'll say a couple of things. Marysville Business Alliance has been moving forward very well and organizing one heck of a Christmas plan for the parade, the day of the parade. There's going to be food trucks. There's going to be drunken mules walking around, I guess. I'm not sure. Yeah, it's some type of a deal. I don't know. It's got some great stuff going on.
Chief Sacks, be alert.
I know. It's, maybe, maybe Stuart or Jim can explain it better, but they're, they're four-legged, but it's like a, it's a, it's a service, a company, and they, they bring these mules down, and they're
I don't think the mules are actually drunk.
They're not actually drunk, but nonetheless, there's going to be some great activities going on.
As well as fainting goats, you forgot.
Fainting goats. There's going to be fainting goats and a roping thing for cowboy Christmas, but the main goal is to get people out in downtown Marysville shopping for Christmas before the parade, so. So, there's a big effort that's been going on there and it'd be great to see the council there. And also, in connection to that, the weekend before, Saylove is doing an event and actually going to work through D Street, the corridor of the parade and of all the festivities and do a big cleaning up the weekend before. This will be Saturday, the 27th. So, I want to encourage whoever can help or volunteer and be a part of that to be a great effort to just spruce things up down on D Street, partner with Public Works. And it's all a positive community effort to have a good Christmas holiday season, so. And once again, I agree, the Veterans Parade was phenomenal and I always love it. I try to make it every year. And it's a, it's a very well-run parade and very honoring to our vets. So, good job, I think is American Legion posts that, hosts that, right? So, yes, thank you very much. And that's all I have.
Any comments?
I missed one, I was told. Many of you have seen the paving work that's going on on First and B as well as F. And it looks like they'll be completed with that this week. So, good start on paving. And then I was informed by our city engineer, John Mallon, that we should be looking at closing bids for Fifth Street mid-December, and that'll probably come to council before the end of the year.
Real quickly, this was my first Veterans Day parade. It's the first time I put on any Navy gear since I was mustered out, with an honorable discharge, by the way, 50 years ago. And I was scared to death of, oh, getting in this parade and then Stuart is going to walk. So I get out of my car and I'm thinking about walking and I'm nervous. And about a half a block into it, I was having so much fun, I couldn't stand it. Handing out flags and seeing all the kids and seeing all the veterans along the way. And D Street was at least too deep all the way, all the way from Sixth to Second. It was absolutely grand. It was spirit lifting. I loved it and I'm ready for the next one. We do have another parade coming up. That would be the Christmas parade that was mentioned earlier on Saturday, December 4th. And the night before, there's a Christmas tree lighting ceremony at the corner of Third and D with that beautiful tree, beautiful conifer. Let's see into my comments. I'm not missing anybody, am I? Okay, next meeting will be held Tuesday, December 7th at 6:00 PM. As a reminder, the December 21st meeting has been recessed, which is a fancy way of saying canceled. Okay, and now we go into a notice to the public. City clerk, do you want to read that?
Thank you, ma'am. After the closed session, the council will leave the council chambers and the meeting will be adjourned by operation of law due to lack of a quorum. If there is any reportable closed-session action, a report will be made at the beginning of the next regular council meeting. I ask that after the closed-session item descriptions are read by the mayor, that all members of council, applicable consultants and staff join the closed-session meeting in the Cobolade Room. Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to adjourn to closed session. If you'd like to comment on the closed-session items listed on the agenda and you are attending this meeting in person, please complete a speaker's card and return that to the city clerk. When called upon, go to the podium to address the council. If you're participating via Zoom and would like to speak, please raise your hand via Zoom. Whether you're here in person or attending via Zoom and called upon, please give your name clearly for audio recording. You are requested to address your comments to the council and not to the audience. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone wishing to comment on the items on the closed session?
No speakers tonight, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, I'm going to now read the two items that will be discussed in closed session. The first item pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8, conference with real property negotiators, the property being Bryant Field on 1431 C Street, Marysville. City negotiator, Mr. Jim Shad, negotiating parties YCM Baseball Group LLC under negotiation price terms of payment. The next item to be discussed pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, pardon me, paragraph I of subdivision D of section 54956.9. Name of case, city of Marysville versus California Department of Transportation at all, petition for writ of mandate in the Uva County Superior Court with an appropriate case number indicated. We will now enter into closed session. This meeting is adjourned.